Hey, welcome to the TC Palm Editorial Board to interview candidates in the Port St. Lucie election. I'm Larry Reisman, Community Editor, and I'm joined by fellow editorial board members Adam Neal, Editor and News Director, Blake Fontanet, and Ed Keller, Columnist, and Adam Zalbog, a Reader Advisory Board Member. Special thanks to our candidates for meeting with us today and streamlining this process by completing questionnaires ahead of time. Board members have reviewed them. Those questionnaires can be found at tcpalm.com/elections. At the conclusion of this interview, editorial board members will discuss possibly writing editorial to recommend a candidate in this race. Blake will lead the questioning and open it up to other editorial board members towards the end. We might end up having more of a conversation than just a simple Q and A, and our goal is to be completed in 45 minutes or so. Because of our time constraints, we ask that you keep your answers concise. So right now, I'll turn it over to Blake.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you, candidates. And as I said at the start of our first session tonight, for the benefit of the candidates and the viewers watching, if you happen to see us looking away for a minute, it's not that we've lost interest, it's possible that we're jotting down notes, so just bear that in mind. The first question I'd like to direct to Mr. Greenberg first, and it is, what is your strategy for bringing more economic development to Port St. Lucie? And are there specific parts of town that you feel need more attention than others?
Well, I think I've got two strategies, two approaches, is to get the C-23 and C-24 Canal Ocean Access, and then to get a trash burning power plant that is size enough to be able to handle the Martin County trash, the Okeechobee trash, the St. Lucie County trash, and Indian River trash. As I've outlined on my website, and put links to the presentations on the website as well, the trash burning power plant has been around for hundreds of generations, and with modern technology, it is super efficient, super clean, and you can actually make a lot of money off of your trash. And that money that is made, and by my calculations, it's $100 million or more, and that's using the Broward example, which is same population density as the city of Port St. Lucie, not including all the other counties. And we use the model of the new unit and Unit 2 that Palm Beach County just put online in 2015, that actually is more money, because that's a much bigger unit than Broward County, which is a 66-megawatt unit, and Palm Beach has 100-megawatt unit. So that would generate a continued income stream for the city that can offset your taxes by the revenue generated from selling the byproducts of burning your trash. And then the canals making that ocean go on access allows you to have 25 miles inland of development potential, and if you go to my website, you can see what I recommend. And I'd recommend having a carve-out at least 1,500 acres of forest, so you can preserve that, because otherwise, it's going to look exactly like the city, which are cookie cutter lots, no parks, no land, no forest. So I think that's a huge economic generator for the city and for the county of Port St. Lucie, and for Martin County, because they all would benefit on that. And you can look at those examples on my website as to what needs to get done and how to go about doing that. And on the 19th, I'm meeting with the state of Florida delegates, which is tomorrow, to get the ball rolling, because I'm a doer, I like to get things done. And yeah, so.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, same question. What's your economic development strategy? And are there any areas in town that you think are particularly in need of attention?
Thank you, and thank you to TC Palm, the editorial board, for having this forum. I believe it's important to intelligently advocate on behalf of the city, as well as to advise and inform our citizens as to the choices they have with regards to this election. I believe I'm the only candidate who actually has his own business, who runs payroll for multiple employees. Every two weeks, we run staff and payroll for 15 employees here at the firm, and it's an important part of our process, and making sure that we are providing jobs and good quality jobs here. And it's been a part of my lifestyle and what my goal is here on my private side. With regards to the city itself, obviously, we're the seventh largest in the state in size of population, so we have a huge demand for good quality and good quantity jobs. The city, I believe, has done a great job on the western side of the city, working with Amazon and FedEx, and the St. Lucie County EDC, and the Chamber of Commerce on creating good quality and good quantity jobs, but obviously, the demand continues as we continue to grow. There is a, while there has been a lot of focus for the western side of the city, I do believe that there is definitely a need on the eastern side of the city, the city center. We need to make sure that we are taking good care of the city center, eastern side of the city, that is the western side of the city. Actually, when I was in high school, I shoveled popcorn and clean movie theaters, the Village Green Movie Theater, which is exactly where the city center sits now. So I, you know, I was making five bucks an hour now, five bucks an hour then, and I'm familiar with that eastern side of the city and the needs that are over there. And if we don't focus on city center and that eastern side of the city, we run the risk of losing the ability to really grow jobs over there. So I believe that, especially when it comes to city center, but across the entire city, we need to triangulate the process. We have the government, we have the citizens, and we have the private, and we can create a win-win situation, win-win-win situation, by triangulating it, involving the parties, and getting them to come to some type of equitable interest there. So that is my interest, and certainly, I think everyone here is interested in job creation and job growth, but that is my focus.
Thank you, and we'll start with you for the next question as well. Talk about infrastructure needs. What do you feel are some of the city's greatest infrastructure needs, and in what parts of town are those needs greatest?
I think you need to unmute Travis.
Oh, there we go. Years ago, nearly 20 years ago, at that time, you know, there was F levels of service on Floresta, there was F levels of service in Oroso, and, you know, so there's constantly been a need, as the city grows and expands exponentially, as it does, to make sure that we're in front of the traffic, and making sure we're doing everything we possibly can to do so. You know, the work that's been done up to this point, obviously, you know, back in 2000, the Croftown Parkway was just a plan, and now we have one. And so I commend the city council for being advanced with regards to infrastructure needs from a traffic standpoint. That being said, we are experiencing F levels of service during rush periods of time now, and we need to work on finding ways to ensure that we are getting our proper share of impact fees, mobility fees, or impact fees, possibly mobility fees, in the future with regards to making sure that we can do the improvements for the roads that we can. That's a big part of it. And as far as infrastructure goes, one of the big things was just at the unveiling of the Don Cooper Municipal Complex, you know, one of the big things that the city of Port St. Lucie has done, that a lot of other cities have not done, is actually invested heavily into their utility system. And I think that that's one of the reasons why we are experiencing the growth that we have, is because we are able to hook up people to water and sewer effectively and quickly without having to do so. That being said, one of the infrastructure needs also is the septic. You know, we have 12,000 people or 12,000 homes still on septic systems, which is causing affluent and Tylenol and drugs, and you name it, from the septic systems that are failing into our rivers and estuaries. So I do believe our need is converting people from septic to water and sewer with grants, incentives, whether it be on the federal or state level, working with the federal and state regulator and lawmakers to find ways to get these people off of septic. So in answer to your question in sum, we have to be in front of the road needs, because we are growing exponentially, and we have to get people off of septic.
Thank you. Same question for Mr. Greenberg.
And that question is, what is our infrastructure needs or future growth for infrastructure needs?
What are the greatest areas of need, and are there any particular parts of town that you see as more in need of help than others?
Well, I personally think every school should have sidewalks within two miles of it, because the kids are walking to school. So I know my area, which is the Becker Road area, there's a school right up the street from me, there's no sidewalks, and that's Port St. Lucie Boulevard. And it's kind of odd that we have a sidewalk plan that was sent out and is approved, which is great, awesome. I love having sidewalks. About time we have a sidewalk plan. But I think we should have done it a little bit differently, of starting with, hey, every school that is greater than two miles, focus, don't focus on those, focus on those. That way, kids can walk to school within the two miles, because buses don't pick them up. And getting ahead of the curve, so Prime Lane Prairie, which is a development in Martin County, which is drastically going to affect the Becker Road. I moved the Becker Road because the plan back in 2008 was to have roundabouts on the major three arteries. And I'm like, about time people start putting roundabouts in, because they make traffic flow work well. And you don't have to deal with stoplights at 2:00 in the morning, when you're waiting for a red light, when you have a boat behind you. It makes no sense that there's a traffic light when a roundabout works perfectly fine. So it's just looking at the future growth demands of the city, what areas need focused on, and what are our current problems. And right now, it's, to me, it's childhood safety, which your kids aren't walking in the road or on the side of the road, getting to school. And so they want to go to school, they're encouraged to go to school, they ride the bike to school, keep America fit, because we're so obese, it's ridiculous because of the sugar. So that's what I've got to say on that.
Okay, thank you. And we will go back to you for this next question first. What steps do you think can be taken to improve Waste Pro's garbage pickup service?
Well, it seems to be a hot topic at the moment, and Waste Pro is kind of at a disadvantage, because the current contract, as I understand it, allows for unlimited pickup. So somebody could be moving out of the house and completely put their entire house possessions on the side of the road, and Waste Pro has to pick it up. That, to me, is a very unfair advantage. And then all the tree trimming businesses that are fly-by-night, they give people a much better deal on trimming their trees, because they haul it to the side of the road and expect Waste Pro to come pick it up. And they don't haul it to the landfill or to a true recycling company that makes mulch. So if you do a single-stream recycling process that we currently do in Port St. Lucie, why can't we do a single-stream garbage pickup? You have one garbage can, now you're allowed to stick everything you want in it, and the mechanical arm comes, picks it up, dumps it in the truck. That eliminates two drivers that can be used for driving more trucks, which will be used to pick up on time on the other areas of the city. Any city that has done single-stream pickup has saved 600,000 or more on their revenue, because they don't have as many employees on the payroll, paying health benefits, paying medical claims, because it pulled back, pulled strains, because they're sitting inside the cab, which is air-conditioned. They just have to push the button, and the mechanical arm comes out, picks up the garbage can, dumps it into their dump truck, or their trash truck, really. And that allows you to get more operators that have a CDL license to want to drive a garbage truck, because they're used to sitting inside a cab, and you can increase their salary to attract customers and people who want to work for Waste Pro, so they can have enough drivers to go around and pick up the trash. Because if you switch to waste management, all the fees will be significantly higher, which means your mileage rate is going to go up. So Waste Pro is by far the low-cost provider that we currently have. When you look at waste, when you look at waste management, the solid waste authority, if you look at all the waste companies, they say, hey, yes, we'll come take care of your trash, but it's going to cost you. So if we work with Waste Pro, say, hey, why don't we do a single-stream trash pickup? That'll save you money, you can pay your drivers more, but they can have more retention. I think we ought to work smarter, not harder. Remember, vote for Jared Greenberg, what can Jared do for you? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, same question. How would we go about improving Waste Pro's service?
Yeah, I think this is one of the major reasons why having an attorney on the city council is an important thing, because the biggest agreement that the city of Port St. Lucie has, and it's over a $500 million annual budget, the biggest contract that it has with any of its vendors is the franchise agreement with its waste hauler. So right off the bat, you know, making sure that the city legal department is on top of enforcing the franchise agreement, I believe, is a huge, important issue, to make sure that we're taking care of that. As I go door-to-door throughout our city, you know, I hear complaints about the trash, and I think Waste Pro needs to be held accountable. That franchise agreement needs to be held accountable, and Waste Pro needs to be held accountable for failing to perform under that contract. And the city has fined and collected over $1 million from Waste Pro thus far for their failure to perform under that contract. You know, that being said, you know, I believe the enforcement actions still need to continue, because with pain points of that franchise agreement will come hopeful compliance. Look, I was at the city council meeting about a month ago or so, when the COO, you know, came up to a night meeting at the Port St. Lucie City Council, and said, look, I know we're not doing well, we're not performing well. And so I think Waste Pro is making attempts to make things better. And I think, you know, that's by an excuse, you know, there is competition in the market for staff and employees. I know in my firm, you know, I'm always looking to hire, you know, new staff, because you never know when turnover may exist, and that the challenge becomes is that the quality of staffing right now is low, and that's in the legal field. Now, think about it from a garbage perspective. I mean, 90, 95 degrees out, hot outside, and you're playing with trash. I mean, it's not exactly the most appealing, you know, work to be done. And, you know, those CDL drivers that are required in order to do so, they could go to FedEx, or they could go to a peddler in order to do so. Now, that doesn't excuse Waste Pro from not doing their job, but it provides some perspective as to how we can, you know, better enforce these agreements. Because the reality of the fact is that, you know, at this point, you know, waste management could come in, and they could say, we'll take your franchise agreement. But my understanding is that waste management hasn't come and isn't interested, because they have their issues. And quite honestly, the city actually, you know, produced its own white paper recently with regards to the trash issue, and in a harrison of different cities, you know, the city of Port St. Lucie has it pretty good. You know, the city in Miami pays 17 more a month for service, which is, you know, I think the city of Port St. Lucie pays just around $23. That's almost double the rate. And so, you know, I think that, you know, the city needs to continue to hold Waste Pro responsible. When the franchise agreement renewal comes up for consideration and negotiation, we need to be all over it. And we just need to be aware of the issues, and not address too much, but the actual pickups are a challenge. I think we have a lot of people who were renovating during COVID, so there was huge trash piles out there. The yard waste is the biggest issue, and the claws of trucks that are required in order to do so are a big part of the challenge. They're required within 72 hours after tagging that yard waste to pick it up. However, because of the lack of CDL drivers, they're just having their own challenges. So, you know, they need to continue to enforce it, continue to educate the citizenry, and look, I mean, you know, other places require, you know, dumpsters, or, you know, I think there's a free opportunity for pickup, you know, when somebody moves up. And so, does the city have to look at making it a little more stringent in order to make the pickups more available? I don't know. But yeah, I do know that the franchise agreement that is in place right now needs to be actively enforced.
Thank you. And we'll have you go first on this next question. What steps do you think the city could take to better utilize city center?
Well, it goes, the city center is, I mean, now that the city has taken back, or is in the process of taking back the property from the SEC and the receivership that's in place, you know, the city really needs to find a way to triangulate, as I spoke about it earlier, that the citizenry, the government itself, the city council, and the private side need to come together and create and triangulate some opportunities there. It's a CRA, let's be real, and a CRA isn't put in place unless there's, you know, an issue there. There's an issue with regards to the ability to do something. So they provide incentives for businesses to come in and do so. The great thing about free-market capitalism is that where there's a demand, you know, eventually, should the ability to be there, or the situation arise, the capitalists will come in and take advantage, you know, take an opportunity and start a business there. So I think that, you know, the city has done a great job of reaching out and to the businesses. Obviously, their interest is whether on our demographics, which obviously, we need to, will continue to work on and improve, because, you know, places like, you know, Cheesecake Factory or something, aren't going to come to the city of Port St. Lucie unless the demographics support that. And so we can go knock on their door all we want, but if they don't, if the demographics aren't there, then we have an issue, you know. And so also, I think a big thing that the city council can do is work with state and federal legislatures to make, you know, where are the incentives, where are there other grants, and develop the relationships that are there in order to really enhance the city center, because the truth of the matter is that the city center, that eastern side of the city, needs our attention in order to make sure that, you know, it doesn't fall by the wayside.
Thank you. And Mr. Greenberg?
Put in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. That way, the public has a place to relax and enjoy and go swimming, because being the sixth, seventh, fifth, whatever we are, until the census comes out, largest city in the state of Florida, where's the local community swimming pool? That would be a great spot to have a community swimming pool, and other venues that will help the local area be more enjoyable to go and do. I mean, Martin County High has a swimming pool, we swam there in high school, but there's no swimming pools that I know of locally around that you can go swimming at. I say, let's do a citizen survey, see what the citizens want, and say, hey, would you guys like a swimming pool? Or would you like a downtown area? Or would you like a nightlife? Or would you like an entertainment venue of having concerts? But see what the citizens want in their neighborhood, because that is their neighborhood, and that will help juvenileate the eastern part of the city. That's all I've got to say on that.
Thank you. And I will stay with you on that one. The next question, you have sort of led into one of the questions on my list, which was, does Port St. Lucie need a true downtown? And if so, how do you create that sense of place, and where do you create that sense of place within a city that's already developed as Port St. Lucie is?
Well, the city has very unique geographical restrictions. You're going to have to do really two city centers, because people in the traditional corridor aren't going to want to drive 35 minutes down to a city center down on US 1 because of traffic. So if you want to have a eastern city center and a western, or eastern downtown area and a western downtown area with venues, and as planned, to have a cheesecake factory, but you have to have the population to be able to do that type of development. So Port St. Lucie is a retirement community. It is catered to a non-family-focused community, because it has the lowest tax rate and attracts people that want to retire. So if, and there's not a lot of elderly people that are going to go clubbing downtown on West Palm Beach Clematis. I mean, that's just the nature of the beach. So that's probably the reason why we don't have a downtown area developed yet, because the residents aren't screaming at it, except for the younger generation that would like to have a place to go and hang out and do things. So you're going to have to do two downtown areas that's practical for that to happen, but you have to have a job corridor that can support that. So you have to have economic development, that companies want to come in and build and do factories in your area. And having Amazon come in, wonderful. That's $15 an hour. You can't raise a family on $15 an hour. You know, I mean, that's great for high schoolers that want to work there, but we need to be giving companies that are doing $35, $45 an hour that you can raise a family on and support your family and have a life and not be housebroken. So that's what I've got to say on that.
Thank you. And Mr. Walker?
Yes, thank you. And when I was serving on the Port St. Lucie Planning and Zoning Board and its Economic Growth Team, the importance of finding a downtown feel was always high on the list of things to do and find. The reality is that, obviously, you know, we're the third-largest city in size of landmass, and we have a median age of roughly 42 years old. And so there's a diversified need, both in geography as well as population with regards to needs and demands and everything else. And so my vision is one of different city center likes down throughout the area. I think that the city has already kind of teed that up a little bit with naming different neighborhoods and being aware of the geography issues that are ongoing. But, you know, my family moved here, and I've lived here since 1996, with the exception of when I went off to law school, and we didn't have Croftown Parkway, we lived off Floresta, and, you know, it was, you know, there wasn't a downtown center, and there really isn't one. And so 25, you know, 25 years or so later, we're still asking the same questions. So, you know, we are, we are a general development municipality, and we inherited the quarter-acre lot capitalism experiment that they had. And so, you know, we have to create the best environment for business as we possibly can, and with, while at the same time respecting property rights and entitlements as they currently stand. And when you have quarter-acre lots across the entire city, you know, obviously the city can't just go and have a huge taking process without it being extremely, extremely expensive. That's, you know, a huge opportunity for the city, I think, is to identify through the future land use map and its zoning, to find these city centers. And again, you know, it'll take a triangulated process, you know. If there's charrettes involved, involve the public, the city council handles the project, but essentially, it's going to be the private sector who has to fill that, those jobs, those economic engines. And so we have to have an environment where we're working collaboratively with other governmental agencies, counties, the state, the federal, you know, developing those relationships, strengthening those relationships, that we can capture those opportunities when they present themselves.
Okay, thank you. It's been mentioned several times now. Tell me, and let's start with you again, Mr. Walker. What are your thoughts about what role city government can have in trying to increase wages within the private sector?
It's an important question, and it's one I experience every day as I run payroll. I run a payroll this Friday. And in order to, in order to have good quality staff, you have to pay them a good quality wage. Otherwise, the competition in the market will take them away. And so, you know, the city of Port St. Lucie has to be constantly cognizant of the impact of the private sector on the competition for staff and employees, and making sure that they're well compensated. That's a huge issue, and making sure that, you know, we have the proper and appropriate staffing. I sat in on their annual budget meeting, you know, a month ago or so, and, you know, they're having to increase the building department, they're having to increase the public works, the departments. And, you know, we are adding District 5 for the police department, which are going to have war-sawn officers, and eventually, you know, lieutenants and captains in that district. And it's all based upon the city, which, as we all know, has grown exponentially and done amazing things. However, it has put a demand on with regards to staffing and making sure we're providing good services while being, you know, good advocates, being good custodians of the public funds, and not overtaxing and balancing that, because, you know, those people who work for the city, they're expecting a pay stub every two weeks. And in order to make sure that that happens, you know, you have to, you have to be paying a competitive wage.
Thank you. Mr. Greenberg?
Build a trash burning power plant that generates revenue for the city, and you can pay your employees more, because you're using waste to make money. So the, I think it's called Kaizian Economics.
Hey, Blake, it looks like Jared's video and audio may have froze.
Well, the government, to me, is to be a minimalist approach. I do not like big government. I really support freedoms and liberties. I personally think that the city of Port St. Lucie is like you're living in a homeowners association, even though you're not in a homeowners even though you're not in a homeowners association. I grew up in Jupiter Farms and I love being able to ride my horse down the road. Granted, you really can't ride a horse down the road in the city of Port St. Lucie because you're not allowed to have a horse because there's there's no animals allowed. You can only have a dog and a cat. And so I think the role of government to let the capital dictate where jobs go is is great. But I really think the government should be guiding that. And hey, this is a development area set aside for a future trash burning power plant because that would take care of all of our Florida mountains. That's revenue stream and it helps the environment. Since we're all pro anti septic fields in the city. I have a septic field and it works perfectly fine. I I I don't see my septic field affecting anything because it was designed by an engineer. It was certified by the health department, it was professionally installed. So if you have a septic system that is failing, there's a reason why the septic system is failing. And I know this is a very emotional topic with converting septic to sewer. I think it's wrong that the city forces the residents to get to the city sewer system if your septic system fails, even though you're nowhere near a river. I understand if you put in a septic field and you did it by yourself and you weren't a licensed plumber and you have no idea about the soils and what you need for a septic system to work properly, that it could have an issue on the river. And if you put it right by the river, well, guess what? It will leach into the river. But if you put a septic field 1,000 feet away from the river, you should not have anything going into the river from your septic field because that's how it's designed. So that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. I'm going to throw this open to the other editorial board members to see if they have any questions right now. Adam, Larry, Ed. Adam?
Yeah, this is Larry. I I have a question. I guess we'll start with Mr. Greenberg. Can you please give me an example of a time when you faced an ethical challenge? How did you resolve it?
An ethical challenge on the spot. I I can't give you one off the top of my head, but I try to go off my moral compass as as the Bible says and to treat others with with respect. I am, I I serve on my church board. I've been nominated from my church congregation to to serve the church. I teach soccer and hopefully basketball when we get that program up and running. Ethical problems. Just be truthful, speak speak truth, but with love and speak to the facts and let the science go where the science goes. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Yes, as as an officer of the court for 14 years, I've actually experienced this a few times where sometimes a client wants to say something to the court that I know is untruthful. And as an officer of court, my duty is to the court before it is, you know, to my client in those instances. And so it's, you know, I've, in some of those instances, I've had to either, you know, withdraw from representation or that, you know, not answer, not ask questions that I know are are going to elicit untruthful responses. I have the Florida Bar Ethics Hotline on my my phone because it's it's a call that I make often because it's important to make sure that we have, you know, ethics and integrity when it comes to our 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 people, you know. And conflicts of interest happen often as a lawyer as well. And we we have to, you know, sometimes opportunities present themselves to represent clients. However, we have a conflict of interest and we have to to back out or not take a case. And so, you know, those types of things have happened in the past. And and, you know, it's it's as an Eagle Scout and as an attorney, you know, we take ethical oaths to 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 serve and protect. And, you know, that's that's part of, I've experienced it a few times, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Adams or Ed? Ed?
Yeah, I have a I have a question. Mr. Walker, let's start with you since you were you were just up. Could you tell me, if you look into the future, say 10 years from now, give me three things that you see in Port St. Lucie 10 years from now that maybe, you know, maybe we don't see today? Like, what were the three things you would see 10 years from now?
Well, we we definitely see, the three things that I see is a is a huge increase in the population and growth. The building permits are out the wazoo. And even though, even as we go through these cycles of economic downturn, upturn, there's always, it is cyclical, it is seasonal. And so if we do see a downturn, we are inevitably going to see an upturn as well. So we're going to have, we're going to see huge population growth, especially in the western growth area, the Wilson Groves, the Southern Groves area, out where Tradition is or south of where Tradition is. And we're, so we're going to see see a huge involvement there. Number two, I I definitely hope and pray that, you know, we have people off septic. You know, we have the opportunity for all the new homes to be on water and sewer. And so the older homes, especially those within 50 feet of the river, my vision is for the all of those homes to be off septic and on to water and sewer. And so that that's that's a huge part of it. And then I think we'll we'll see some some strong, you know, multiple downtown centers. Again, we're the third largest city in size of 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 landmass. And so there's there's plenty of opportunities there to to create, you know, economic opportunities. I'm a member of the Economic Development Council and the Chamber of Commerce. And so, you know, working with those agencies to to bring in, you know, good businesses into those those centers and then fully, you know, vamping out the the Southern Groves area. The 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 city, you know, was involved and and has had to escalate immensely the the timeframe by which they thought they were going to have to, you know, sell off these pieces of land out there in the in the in the groves because just the demand's been there. I mean, Amazon, Cheney Brothers, FedEx, you're seeing a huge demand for that, those type of properties with that vicinity close to major interstates and the Turnpike. And so, you know, I I definitely see, you know, those downtown centers populating. And so the population is going to grow, you know, the the downtown centers are going to probably going to be great opportunities. And I I really hope and pray that, and I envision that the the city is is fully on water and sewer.
Thank you. Mr. Greenberg, to you, you look in your crystal ball 10 years from now. Where do you, what you mean, give me three things you see in in Port St. Lucie's future?
Well, hopefully the mileage rate is 4% due to the 23, 24 canal being ocean access and a trash burning power plant to get rid of all the trash and make money off of. And everywhere you have a sidewalk so you can walk. And the schools will all stay A rated and will have a huge population growth. And the schools will be encouraged to keep the shop class open so high schoolers can graduate with a license either in welding and electrician and carpentry and in plumbing. That way we keep local jobs local and you don't have to outsource because it's really hard to find an AC guy calling them from India to come out and change your air handler. So you have to have a job source locally and solve it locally. And the only way to do that is to make it cost effective for families to be able to raise in this area to create a full circle job corridor of of taking care of families, raising the families. And then those families will have jobs that support the community, either with factories that pay well or in the shop and trade classes. Not everybody needs to have a college degree to be able to provide for your family. That's all I've got to say on that.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
Hey guys, I have a question. The city is rapidly changing and the workload demands on council members have evolved. If you're elected, how will you manage your personal and professional life to best serve the citizens of the city? Travis, can you answer first?
Sure. Now, in in having run my own firm for for 10 years, one of the things that I've I've learned to do more and more is to be an owner, not an operator. And so prioritizing, you know, your time is essential when growing a business or doing anything else. Additionally, I'm a two-time Ironman triathlon finisher. And that requires, you know, quite a bit of discipline and calendaring in order to make sure that you get those workouts in so that you can you can complete those 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 races. And so I've I've had experience with having to to, you know, to calendar my time, be mindful of my time, whether it's, you know, building the business, whether it's triathlons, whether it's being a family man and spending time with my wife and two children and making sure that, you know, they get the the time that I need to invest in them to make sure that I'm I'm providing the good quality lives and relationships that they need. And so it's it is, it's a great question because there is a lot of demand and it can be a big, a black hole in time if you if you allow it to be. But I think it's a quality of life issue and, yeah, I think it helps every city council person if they have a well-balanced life to lead. Jared?
All right, time management. Yes, it's all about time management. And so I've done a ton of service already for my community. You can go to my website, you can watch my YouTube videos and see all the stuff that I've I've gotten done, gotten trees planted, I've gotten recycling bins put in. I've got lots rezoned to single family that were sold as multi-family. And this is just part-time, you know what I mean? And neighbors come to me, they go to Jared to solve problems in our neighborhood. And I answer their questions. I've taken the city university course to be able to better understand how the city operates so I can serve my neighbors and help them out when they have problems. And for my pet projects, because I like doing things, I like building things, I'm a doer. I like to get things happen. And when I look back and see what has accomplished since since I've been here in 2008, like, wow, what would it be if I was in city council? And people have always come to me and said, Jared, you need to be on city council. You get things done, your ideas are 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 way above the current outlook that the city has. And you're looking at the 30,000 foot level, not the 4,000 foot level of what the city needs for the future. So it 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 comes to time management and I'm able to serve. I I have a very loving, supporting wife, a wonderful family. And I just like to take care of people.
Other questions from board members? If not, I've got one more I'd like to throw out there from a reader. One of our readers has pointed out that we haven't asked you yet what steps, if any, you might take to address the situation with COVID. And so I'm wondering what, first of all, you think a city government could do and what would you do if elected to this position to to try and mitigate the the effects of this pandemic? And I I think it's your turn to start, Mr. Greenberg.
Well, as a survivor of COVID, I got it back in June and we had no idea where I got it from because we were very diligent and we didn't go anywhere, we ordered everything online. But I wound up getting COVID. And so my wife is a pharmacist and so I I did not have to go to the hospital. It was a very minor reaction, but it did lay me out for a good six months. And at work, I work up in Piper Aircraft up in Vera Beach. And I thought I did not need to get the vaccine because I had antibodies because I already had COVID. I mean, God's design, you get the virus, you get antibodies and it takes care of you. And we had a doctor come to Piper and give a speech. I asked a bunch of questions because I was on the anti-vaccine campaign because I thought, you know, the, from my biology course back in in college, that I'm good to go. And he's like, no, you would be much better and you could survive if you get COVID again if you were vaccinated because it improves your antibody count. So that really, and I asked a bunch of questions about if you're pregnant, you know, what, when should you get it? And both my wife and I are now vaccinated because we thought it's best for our family. We spoke to our physician about what's best for my family. We know so many people that have died from COVID that were perfectly healthy and should not have died. So for the city government's role in taking care of the health, I think the city government should encourage people to look at the correct information and what's best for them and their family. I know I was, my my position changed because of the more informed information that I received. And all I can say is speak to your doctor and what is best for you. Because when you hear that a couple got COVID, the wife decided to get treatment, the husband decided not to get treatment and the husband died and he was a healthy individual before he got COVID, it it's it's an eye opener. So now the wife is a single parent raising their kids. And I think it is very selfish for somebody to think that, oh, I'm invincible to getting COVID, I will survive it. It it's Russian roulette that you don't know how your body will respond to the coronavirus. And so I I I think it would be very advantageous to encourage people to get vaccinated, to do public service in that instance with facts, you know, not myth beliefs. Oh, it makes you have a third arm and you're 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 going to get a tumor. You know what I mean? No, that's all, the anti-vax has no science. You got to be based on science. And we had millions of vaccines and very few side effects. There have been side effects, but those have been resolved. Let's see what were the root calls. And once the COVID vaccine is officially, not a temporary grant, like is is has been, I forget the FDA term of vaccines. I I mean, it's, people would think it's the mark of the beast, you know what I mean? But it's not the mark of the beast, it's science, you know? So I think it's it's a very hot topic of 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 current society. And it's, I'm glad the viewer asked that question because it does make a difference on how you will be a public servant and try to help the public. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And Mr. Walker?
Sure. And I think this is a great example of of when the city needs to stay in its own lane. You know, the state designates the the county departments of health to provide data, to to analyze data with regards to, you know, how to handle this, the pandemic. As we have all experienced in the last year and a half, there has been, there's been information that's gone out and then it had to been pulled back. There's had to be, you know, pivots and and postures and everything else like that. And, you know, we need to be just constantly aware and advise and be and take advice from the state and from the county with regards to to how to 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 handle the pandemic. Because, I mean, the the reality is is that it's it's a state, you know, that is the the delegation of authority when it comes to the state and the county. And so the city would would have, is required to take direction from the state when it comes to it. So, you know, that would be, you know, making sure we have a strong relationship with our local county department of health and getting regular updates from them, staying safe as much as you possibly can and consider the vaccine.
Thank you. Well, we're a little past 45 minutes. So at this point, Larry, do you want to wrap us up here?
Yeah, we can give you 30 seconds. And and when I say 30 seconds, you know, it really needs to be 30 seconds. So, Mr. Walker, maybe just wrap it up in 30 seconds if you can. And we appreciate you coming on.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. And as a, I I am Travis Walker, 772-873-7377 is my cell phone. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. I'm a business owner, a lawyer, a homeowner, a husband and a father and a concerned citizen. I ran for this same seat 20 years ago. So I've I've always wanted to serve in this capacity. And I may have been too young at the time, but, you know, through my experience in growing a business, coming back and growing a family, I believe it's now my time to 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 do so. And in addition to being an attorney, I'm an Eagle Scout. So I've taken two oaths to serve and so I'm wired to serve. And I've proved my leadership through numerous nonprofit and governmental boards, including the City of Port St. Lucie's Planning and Zoning Board and its Economic Growth Team. So I would love your vote, your support, the TC Palm's endorsement. And thank you so much for this opportunity, this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Greenberg, please keep it to 30 seconds, no more. Thank you.
All right. So remember, call me 352-514-6426. Or go to my website, check out all my YouTube videos. I am an Eagle Scout, we got three on the council. There's my little award back there and the order of the engineer and yada, yada, yada. I've been serving my community since I've been here in 2008. Vote for Jared Greenberg, what can Jared do for you? And thank you and God bless.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Greenberg and Mr. Walker for coming on. I I must say that we did invite another candidate, Fritz Alexandre. He was unable to make it at any of the times we offered. We also offered to do one at seven o'clock and he couldn't make any of them. So I'm sorry we couldn't get him here, that's why we only had two candidates in this session. But again, we thank you so much for coming on. Stay tuned to TC Palm and its Facebook page, its YouTube page for various coverage as we approach the special election on September 21st. Again, thank you very much for all coming and watching.
Thank you.